Good evening, good evening, good evening, good Sunday, Sunday evening. We are in the house. I'm your host, The Manuel Prophet Soul, and we are here live at That 5 FM Internet Radio, right here, all the way live. We do it to you each and every Sunday at 6:00 PM. We have different guests from hip-hop artists, R&B artists, country artists, politicians, preachers, teachers, and anything that goes on our community, any person in our community doing any kind of work, right here, you will be informed and entertained. And I'm your host tonight, and tonight, we have a special guest, a special, special guest, a dear friend, we go way back. In the house tonight, we have York County Councilman, Rock Hills real mayor, Wim Bump Roddy. What's up, bro?
Man, I'm doing good.
How you doing, man? Yes, sir.
I appreciate the opportunity to come out and share and hang out with you. I'm glad you told me it wasn't a coat and tie affair, I'm able to dress down in my black t-shirt, my black ball cap, so feel like I'm at home.
Yeah, you know you in the house, man, you know, you been my brother since we were kids, man, and just to see all your accomplishments, man, the things that you're doing, man, you know, we're proud of you in the city, man, you helping bring the community together, and it's unifying our people, man, and that's so much needed, man. But before we go into this interview, man, I want you to give the people, you know, a rendition of who you are, man, where you, how you was raised, where you was raised up at, man, just, just, you know, overthrow of who you are.
Well, for those who don't know me, that's listening throughout the Carolinas, throughout the world, that's tuning in to us, William Bump Roddy born and raised in Rock Hill, South Carolina, but I'm visiting over here in LA, South Carolina, right next door to my hometown. So you got some good people up here in LA.
Yes, sir.
But certainly, grew up what I would call in the hood, you know, but it's not where you're from, it's what you're doing to get where you're at.
That's right.
My parents, my mom, she still lives in the same house we grew up in, so that shows that I haven't forgotten where I came from, because when I go see my mom, I'm still reminded about the struggle that goes on in the surrounding communities, and being in and out of that environment each and every day helps keep me grounded, helps keep my nose clean, helps keep me fighting for the things that we need to fight for to change some of these communities throughout Rock Hill. Certainly, been blessed with a lot of good things in my life, beautiful wife, got two kids now, I got one grown and gone, and I got Trey, everybody on Facebook knows Trey, Trey, Trey's name is bigger than Rock Hill, probably than his daddy's name.
What's up, Trey? What's happening?
He's a good kid, but most importantly, you know, I'm humble, I appreciate all the opportunities, and I try to make, I make sure I take advantage of the opportunities to do what I'm set out to do, do what people sent me to do. If anybody got my phone number, that call, reach out to me, they know I'll call them back and do what I can, but man, I enjoy what I do for this community, and like you said a minute ago, I do consider myself the real mayor of Rock Hill, because I think the people of Rock Hill want that, the people of Rock Hill deserve that, even though we didn't fully successfully make it happen in the runoff, but in the hearts and the minds and the souls of people in Rock Hill, they know what I represent, and I represent them because I'm right there with them.
That's awesome, that's awesome, man, and Bump is on the move, man, he's doing a lot of things, man, he's got a lot of stuff coming up, man, you know, and for the supporters out there, if you don't know him, get to know him, man, he has a Facebook page, Wim Bump Roddy, you have another Facebook page, Wim Bump Roddy Celebration, right?
Well, I have a mail's page, a council page, Twitter, Instagram, so I'm all over social media, so just Google my name, put it in, it'll pop up.
And, oh, man, I'm telling you, man, this exciting evening to have you, man, we glad you came to the house, man, you know, our home is your home, you know, and we, we gonna use this platform, man, to bring our community together, build up those that are downtrodden and those that are going through issues, whether it be emotional, mental, whether it be spiritually, politically, you know, we're here to help people get to where they need to be, and I thank you for taking the invite, coming on and hanging out with us, man, and it's gonna be an interesting evening. Most definitely, man, I wanna ask you, you got a birthday coming up, man, birthday party coming up in the whole nine yards, explain that party that's coming up. It's many different elements to this party, so break it down for the people.
I'm definitely growing up, getting older, getting wiser, but man, this is coming up, I'll be 44 this Thursday, but I'm celebrating my birthday on February the 3rd next month, and it's gonna be 100 different reasons why people should come out, hang out, and enjoy themselves, it's my birthday, we over in the February, it's the pre-Super Bowl weekend, we in the February, so it's Black History Month, we in February, so the taxes coming out, them tax dollars coming out, we got other people celebrating birthdays, man, it's just, and I wanna show people an appreciation for what they've given me the opportunity to do, so I wanted to have a absolutely free party at the Elks Lodge in Rock Hill, so people can come out, so I can show them an appreciation for what they've given me the opportunity to do, as well as celebrate my birthday, and we come up with a little twist, it is, we're asking people to bring socks and gloves, so we can donate to our homeless men and women who are in the day-to-day struggle, well below what they, well below the level that they need to be at, so we're gonna start that off, and this is just the tip of the iceberg, man, we're gonna have information that we can give to people who wanna donate shirts, shoes, clothes, hats, jackets, dresses, high heels, whatever they have that they wanna pass on. The socks and gloves, this is just the icebreaker, but we want to make sure we take small shit. A lot of times, people wanna do things, they wanna take it all the way to the top, but you have to grow this thing, because, let's face it, we're not always looking to do charitable work back and give back, we'd rather throw things in the trash and pass it on to someone who can really use it, so man, we just gonna use this as an icebreaker, just to put it out that we do have men and women, and most of the men and women that's out there look like me, come from where I come from, they still in the struggle, so what we gonna try to do is break that ice, to bring that awareness to the homeless situation, you know, we have people who come back, who fought for this country, who served this country, they're in these situations, we have men and women who, whose jobs, who up and left, they're in these situations, so man, it's just gonna be an icebreaker, we want people to come out, have a good time, but most importantly, I want you to come out, so I can show you an appreciation and thank you personally for what we were able to accomplish last year, even though we didn't hit our goal, there's still some success in it, and I tell people, since this election went down in October, a lot of times, the win, the victory is not in the win, victory is in the fight. If you don't stand up and fight, you can't get there.
That's what a victory is, in the fight.
And we didn't win the election, but I think we got a victory out of just going to the fight, ending the fight, putting up, showing what we wanted to see in the campaign that we can run and bring the issues to the table.
That's awesome, that's awesome, man, and we proud of what you're doing, man, and that's gonna be big, man, your birthday bash, and tax, income tax bash, you know what I'm saying, giveaway bash, and, and, and most definitely, it's free, man, so him and his wife, they giving back, man, they giving back, it don't cost you nothing, but just bring something, man, to give to somebody, man, that's, you know, less fortunate right now because of their situation, and that situation could be you one day, you never know who you gonna need, and so, going on with this interview, man, most definitely, man, I wanna ask you, man, what, you know, what, what gave you the urge to go into politics, man?
Man, it, it all started with an instant conversation, I was actually at a football game over at South Point, and struck up a conversation with a guy, and he said, you know, I think you would make a good representative for this community, he said, you've been here, you know people, you know what this community need, and you know, once you get home, you start digesting and think about the conversation that you had throughout the day, and so, I just took it from there, made a phone call, within the next day or so, found out where I need to go, who I need to talk to, how to get this thing going, how to get my name on the dotted line, to put myself out there, but you do have to take a self-evaluation, because you put your personal life on the line, you put your family's name on the line, and most importantly, when people support you, you're representing them, so whatever I do, or whatever I did, from the time I said I wanted to run, I represented the people that was supporting me, so if I made a mistake, it came back on me, it wasn't so much embarrassing them, but you know, when you get people to come out and say, I support Bump Roddy, and Bump Roddy goes off and does something that doesn't reflect the values of that person, it makes them look bad, so I had to rise to the level that I had never been before, because at, at that time, my life, my lifestyle, what I was doing was not under scrutiny, but once you put your name on the line, people look to see who you go around, people look to see where you going, how, what kinda lifestyle you got, what kinda friends you got, and I think I, from that moment on, I still was able to go and do, but I had to be mindful of, you're in the public eye now, you represent your community now, you represent your family, you represent your wife, you represent your kids, and that, that has really helped keep me on track, because you don't hear my name mixed up in, in things that you hear maybe some other higher-level politicians getting involved in, but so I think I've kept my nose clean, and, and all that over, over the years, going back to 2008, when I wasn't successful the first time, but I got back in there, did what I was supposed to do, and we hoping that's gonna be the same pattern, the same route I take when the mayor's race come back around, you know, we wasn't successful in the, at the ballot box, but the next time around, you know, I, I think we gonna blow it out the water, we gonna do what we gotta do, so I'm telling all my supporters, don't, don't give up on me, don't give up on the situation, because I know the things that I represent, the things that I will fight for, it's really fighting for the people that need it most, because some people in a situation that they got their utilities under control, some people in a situation, they able to make the house payment, car payment, live, go, and enjoy all the fruits of the world, but then we got a group over to the side who are constantly struggling, they in the day-to-day struggle, living paycheck to paycheck, getting their lights cut off every other month, you know, facing a situation with their kids, that's the group of people that need me most, some people at the top may not need Bump Roddy to represent them, because they gonna be alright, and Rock Hill's gonna be successful regardless of who is in that mayor's seat.
That's right.
But what about the people over to the side who are not as successful, who need that hand up, who need that voice at City Hall to speak for them, I get more people coming to me asking for, can you write my son or daughter job records, can you write my son a letter to, to the solicitor's office, can you come speak for my son or daughter in, in the courtroom, I do it all, it's just not sitting up there on every other Monday being the face and the voice of the community, you know, I'm going to events, I'm going to cookouts, I'm going to talk to, to people when they get in situations that we know happened throughout the community, so it's not just, you know, people look at, well, you only go to the meeting twice a month, there, there, we had a meeting on, on Friday afternoon, I got on, then I was back up Saturday morning at 8:00 AM with a workshop, so it's just not going to be on camera doing interviews in the newspaper, coming on your show doing interviews, it's a lot more that goes on behind the scenes that come along with this responsibility, and I try my best to meet all my obligations and do it to the best of my ability, but I'm under a lot of scrutiny everywhere I go, everything I do, so I just try to do it at a high level.
You are watched, man, and, and being under that scrutiny, man, it's pressure that come with that, how you handle that pressure, man?
My outlet is home with my family, doing the things that I still enjoy doing, during football season, I'm watching football, doing basketball, I'm watching basketball, baseball, you know, I still get to enjoy the things that I enjoy, but sometimes, I just do it in the confines of my home, I still go out and see people, I still go to some of the same places I go to, but of course, I can't do it in the manner that I used to do it, I can't be all out front, you know, I will go out and partake in a cocktail with some friends, but you won't see me overdo it, I will go out and have a good time, but you won't see me overdo it, because I know I am the face of not just the district for who I represent, my family and my face has now become the face of Rock Hill, because we put ourselves in this situation, and we ready to, to handle it, we ready to, to, to continue to be the face of Rock Hill, and I think we're doing a pretty good job.
Yeah, that's great, man, you are doing a great job, man, at that, man, because we don't hear your name and stuff, and we don't hear you in a bunch of what they call drama mess out there in the community and the public, and you know, you're being about what I think the reason you're grabbing hold of a lot of people is that you are, you carry a good image, you know what I'm saying, you got a wonderful family, and you've been on the county council now for how many years?
This is my fourth term, I am in my, at the end of this year, I've been serving for eight years.
Eight years, that's awesome, that's awesome, eight years, y'all give him a hand. Yeah, eight years, that's awesome, and I'm, I'm just proud of the fact that it's somebody that I grew up with, somebody that I like family to me, that I know, you know, it's such an inspiration to us, you know what I'm saying, it means so much, and I, and I like the fact that you don't take for granted, and you do work hard, you know what I'm saying, you go at it, you know what I'm saying, that's what I love about you, you would go at it, and you got a great wife beside you, man, that, that stands by your side, man, and, and what I love too, we're bringing back that element of family, and so you bring that to the table, you know what I'm saying, how you juggle all that, so how, how, how do you juggle all that and all those responsibilities and still be able to keep your wife and loving you like crazy, and the kids crazy about that, how you do that?
It was, it was a real challenge at, at the beginning, you know, won my first election in 2010, started that off, you know, and I was gung ho, I was going everywhere, I was doing everything, and it was tough on my own life, it was tough on the marriage, because I wanted to make sure I really got in and established myself, so a lot of the household responsibilities fell on her, a lot of the child-rearing responsibilities fell on her, and so she has been the true backbone of me being able to hold it together publicly, we still have our issues at home, we're just like any other family in America, it's not just like any other black family, not just like any other white, we're just like any other family in America, we have our issues, we have our struggles, but at the end of the day, when we lay our head down, we hope that we're in the same position or even better when we wake up the next day, to tackle not just our family issues, but tackle the issues of the community, and I think she supported me, this last mayor run was a true testament of how much she has my back, because we had to move, we had to sell all our furniture, pack up what we could, move inside the city limit, and at the end of the day, we didn't win, but we still in a good situation, we still love each other, we back home now, we just got our house back furnished, so we back home now, man, and it's, it's been, it's been a wonderful experience, and I think, even though we didn't win, we grew, we grew publicly, we grew privately, we grew spiritually, most of all, it's just, we just grow, we're growing up, we're getting wiser, we, we realizing there's more we can do, and I think, you know, some of the things that you're gonna see us transitioning to now is doing more things publicly, because so many people don't know what goes on behind the scenes, they just think, you know, you just, every other week, meetings, see at church doing Campaign Town, so we gonna try to take this journey, whether it's the campaign or our lifestyle, and, and open up some of the doors to, to be a blessing to other people, because so many people don't know what we do behind the scenes, helping people writing reference letters, going to speak on their behalf, so I, I think that will help people understand what all goes into this, and then maybe some people that didn't go vote, will now have an appreciation for what goes into it, and maybe next time, they'll get out and vote for it.
I think, I think that's, that's, that's really awesome, man, you know, you, you gained that experience over the eight years, man, of, you know, politics, and I wanna ask you a question, what's the difference between city council and county council?
Some people don't know, if you live inside the city limits, you get to vote for your city offices as well as your county council office, because the city sits inside the county. We had situations come up this last election, people that lived in the county thought they can vote for city elections, but you can't, because the county is not inside the city. What that does is, if you're in the county, you don't pay city taxes, some people that did have city utilities, some, some neighborhoods outside the city may have city water, but was on a, a separate tank, some people outside the county, outside the city, like my home is now, we have a well, but we have city sewer, but that don't make us in the city, so that's why we had to move inside the city, so the difference is, the city council and the mayor runs all the operations inside the city, even though you may have a Rock Hill address, you may live in the county, you don't get to vote for who your mayor is, you don't get to vote for who's the county.
Cause he's the mayor of that city.
He's the mayor of that city, but he does not have county responsibility, when you get out to the county, we have a chairman that runs all the operations for the county, and we have a county manager that does the day-to-day, so each, the city council is made up of seven members, the county council is made up of seven members, but the city council and the mayor controls all the city operations for salary, mileage for your property taxes, mileage for your car taxes, they control your utility rates, they select your city municipal judges, they select your city municipal solicitors.
City council.
City, the mayor and city council, they put those people in place, and, and, and the general public seems to think that the mayor and city council only does city activities, but they run the courtrooms, they're the ones who pick the city solicitor that has the power to sentence your son or daughter or family member to prison, and it's bigger than that, and even on the county level, our solicitor plays a part in how much time someone gets in prison, so it's, and people say they're not into politics, well, you may not be into politics, but politics is into you, because it controls your everyday life, and people say, I only vote during the presidential election, well, Obama couldn't come out here and fix your park, Donald Trump can't come out here and fix your road, Donald Trump can't be the one who picks your judge, your solicitor, that's the impact on the local level that we fight so hard every day to get people to see, and it's a struggle, but we up for the challenge and we in for the fight.
Well, brother, you know, we wanna use this platform, man, to be able to inform our people on things like that, because a lot of this stuff, our everyday common people in the city have no knowledge of.
Man, it, it, you would be surprised, some of the people who are at the top of the chain, who are very financially stable, don't know some of these things.
Wow.
Because they've, they've grown so much to the level, they don't think it affects them, until they son or daughter standing in front of a judge, they son or daughter standing in front of a situation that they never thought they would be in, and it's the same judge that, that their son or daughter's facing, it's the same one from, someone from my neighborhood is facing, but at the same time, what I see and what I experience, I wanna see more African-American judges, more African-American solicitors, more people, because what that does, it gives them a sense of responsibility of how that person's treated when they come into it, if you don't have someone that look like you, that think like you, or who can relate to your situation, a perfect example, someone of another race is, is caught with, whether it's methamphetamines, opioids, cocaine, whatever, they go in front of a Caucasian judge, there's somewhat of a connection, there's somewhat of a responsibility to treat that person fairly, treat them equally, under the law, someone from my neighborhood is caught with methamphetamines, crack, cocaine, whatever, weapons, whatever, and they go in front of a Caucasian judge, there may not be that sense of responsibility, there may not be that sense of, let me treat this person fairly, just supposed to be blind, but we all know, everybody, if you got eyes, you can see, so when it comes to that, and it may not be that African-American going in front of another African-American judge, but if you have judges in that circle that are able to talk to other judges and keep other judges in check, because judges ultimately are response, are, are controlled, they're under the, the regime of the government, but if no one's at the table, no one's in the room, your interest is not protected, we gotta get people at the table, we gotta get people in the room, so when backdoor deals are being made, someone can say, hold up, that's not the right deal, that's not the right way, we gonna do this, and there's been cases, not just in Rock Hill, not just in South Carolina, but across the country, where we feel that we need justice reform, we need to do away with some of these mandatory sentencing laws, but that comes, that comes, that does come from the top, but at the same time, we as locals need to do a better job of putting people in place who can put a judge in position to treat your son or daughter fairly.
Wow, man, you just gave out so much information that we need and that people need to know, that's why I continue to tell people to tune into the show, because we have everybody on this show, and it's, and information this day is vital for our health, our wealth, our well-being, this type of information, and, and a lot of people don't know, building these relationships in these halls of power makes a difference in one's life.
I, I would love to be so well-established that when a situation comes up, I'm able to make that phone call to whether it's a judge, or whether it's to a solicitor, or to the mayor to say, look, we need to treat this situation with the utmost respect, we need to treat this situation fairly across the board from start to finish, and that comes from relationships, if you don't have a relationship with attorneys, you don't have a relationship with solicitors, you don't have a relationship with these judges, it's gonna be just business as usual, and that, and that's, that's one of my, my biggest things, is we cannot continue to do things the same way and expect a different result, I think that's a definition of insanity, but what we're seeing now from a standpoint, from a city standpoint, and even, even on a county standpoint, I've been fighting so hard to get more African-American department heads, because when it comes time to give Walt T. a job, if Walt T. don't know who the department head is, he don't go to church with that individual, his family's not fluent with that, with that other family, he's probably less likely to get an interview, let alone get a job, in, in, in all fairness, when you have 14, 15 department heads, and you only have one African-American over that department, it makes it a little more harder for that department head to realize that they have to be fair, equitable, and just distributing those tax dollars back out into the community in the form of a job, because nobody goes to the city wanting a check without working, nobody goes to the county to expect a check without working, but what, from my vantage point, what I wanna see, we have less than 10% minority working for the county, we have over 1,100 employees, but only 9% are African-American.
Wow.
We have 230-plus thousand people in York County, but we only have less than 10% African-American employment with the county, now, you don't make a lot of money with the county, but I can assure you, we're not going out of business, we're not shipping our jobs overseas to run York County, these jobs are gonna be here, so if people are looking for stable employment, look to your county jobs, if people look for stable employment, look for these city jobs, you may not get the house on the hill with the picket fence, but you gonna be able to provide for your family, and at the end of the day, go home to a safe, clean, and, and, and good neighborhood, so a lot of people wanna go work in the private sector, but then when that job moves, they look, they wanna fall back, and now come work for the next level outfit into your city or county, don't always overlook the city or county, because there's stability in these jobs, I cannot tell you the last time the, the city or the county looked like they was going out of business, because as long as you got a house, you got lights, you got water sewer running, the city's gonna make their money to pay their employees.
Wow, that's awesome information, man, man, you been, we gonna take a, we gonna take a station break, and I'm gonna announce some of these things, these events that's coming up, we got a King's First Queen, February 24th, 2018, doors open at 5:30 PM, come join us at beautiful McBride Hall on Wentworth University Campus, as mothers and their sons create memories of a lifetime and a chance to be crowned best dressed of the evening. To have more information on this event, call Shwanda Irby, 803-554-5434, a King's First Queen, February 24th, 2018, doors open at 5:30 PM, contact Shwanda Irby at 803-554-5434. And we have another great event coming up with the Board Hill Reunion Committee, they are presenting a red, black, and white unity ball, February 10th, 2018, 9:00 PM, 1:30 AM, at the Elks Lodge, Augn Road, Rock Hill, music will be provided by DJ Ronnie C., tickets in advance are $10, 15 at the door, ages 28 years and up, bring all communities together, this is for all the communities, this Sunset Park, Boardia, Crawford Road, College Down, Westgate, no matter where you're from, this is, we, we, we're just into bringing all the communities together with all of these events, and, and my, and my brother, Wim Bump Roddy is doing his event February 3rd at the Elks Lodge, it's an appreciation party, birthday party, income tax party, Black History Month party, can't pay your bills party, can't pay your bill party, everybody.
I worked all week, wanted to get at the house party, y'all just come on out and have a good time, we gonna, we gonna find many reasons to celebrate.
Yeah, come on out, have a good time, and we, we got a special event coming up here at That 5 FM, Firewater Entertainment, MTC, the Empire, Darry Eastland, we got it coming up, it's called the Pop-Up Tour, right here, February the 8th, and, man, I'm telling you, y'all gotta come out and check this thing out, if you really serious about, you know, making it in the business and doing things in the business, y'all need to come out, if you're a hip-hop artist, or you're a singer, whatever you do, come out, bring two tracks, they're gonna have A&R here, from LA Reid's, Antonio Reid, Aaron Reid, their label, they just came into a big, big, big deal, and they started up a management company called A&R Management, Hicco Records, Darry Eastland is a consultant, and Darry is in the area, and he's opening up doors for you to get deals with Arista, Universal, Epic, Atlantic, they are in the building, they are in South Carolina looking for the next talent, talented superstar or entertainer, so if you're not doing anything, February the 8th, come on out, and the doors will be open at, at 5:00, doors will open at 5:00, and, and I'll get more, I'll get at you more on that, but it's, it's an opportunity of a lifetime for you to come out that day, it's a $25 entry fee, and we're gonna do it big for South Carolina, right here in LA, Lancaster, South Carolina, Firewater Entertainment, That 5 FM, we in the building, Bump Roddy, Wim Bump Roddy, tell me, man, how you get the name Bump, man, where that came from, man?
Man, I would take up the rest of the show if I got into that story, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those names I was given even before I was born, because I don't remember ever a situation coming up, growing up, where it started, it was something that was from, from birth to now, and I'll be 44, my birthday on Thursday, if you've ever voted for me and went to the ballot box, you see that name on there, and, and I just, it's one of those things, you just can't shake, you know, so I've embraced it, I'm gonna stick with it, and hopefully one day, when you come to my office, you'll see Mayor William Bump Roddy, we gonna, we gonna keep pushing that.
Yeah, we gonna, y'all push that, man, Mayor Bump Roddy, push that, man. Yeah, we gonna, y'all push that, man. Mayor Bump-Ruddy, push that, man. Get this brother in office, man, because he got a lot of knowledge, and his eight years of politics, he's learned a lot. He's, he's, he's really encompassed all the information we need. You got any questions? If uh, anybody have any questions, how can they reach you, Bump?
Oh, man, my cell phone number is on my Facebook page, I'll give it out right now, it's eight oh three, nine eight four, eight zero three three. I've had this number probably for fifteen years, so if anybody says they can't reach me, they don't know how to get in touch with me, it's because they don't wanna get in touch with me. My, my name's out there, my face out there, so please, if you have any questions, any concerns, call me, I'll do my best. It don't always work out in your favor, but at the end of the day, you can rest assured that I will get back with you. I will give you an honest effort to resolve, solve your problem, or point you in the direction to get your problems solved, so that's where it needs to be.
That's awesome, man. You know, somebody that's open like that, they put their life on the line, they put their family, their name on the line, their reputation, their family on the line. There's a lot going with politics that we don't know a lot about, and that's why I really wanted to invite uh, Bump out to hang out with us, man, at That Fire. Because at That Fire, man, we, we here to inform you, we here to uh, commune together, to bring our community together, we here to put the neighbor back on the hood. We here to do God's work for real, because this is all a part of God's plan. Nothing that we're doing is not a part of God's plan. And so, you know, and I love the fact that we're able to bring on every aspect of our community on this show is such a blessing. And I wanna thank That Fire FM and Michael Brooks and the family for allowing us this venue. Man, I'm telling you, Bump, it's, it's such a pleasure having you today, man. Um, you know, I even got informed on some things, man. Uh, give us a little more about how the county works, the job that you're doing now as county councilman. What goes on, on the day-to-day, in, in the day-to-day activities and meetings, you know, what do y'all cover as far as the county?
Well, basically, I'll take you back to, to Friday afternoon, Friday evening, and Saturday morning. We basically met here recently to put in place our plan over the next year on how we're gonna achieve our goals, which is to bring in more jobs, which is to update and make sure we have good infrastructure, roads, water, sewer. Making sure we keep our community safe, make sure our shift department has the outfits and the resources that it needs. And make sure that we're taking care of people as they come up with their day-to-day needs. Because some things come up on this side of town, or in this district, Rock Hill, that may not be going on in Clover, Fort Mill, Tigakay, York. So each district has one representative, and we all basically have about twenty-five to twenty-seven thousand people that we represent. Um, and what makes District Four special, it's not the same thing that makes Clover District, whatever that district is special. So we are challenged with making sure we get what we need in our district. We have to fight for, whether it's resources, we have to fight for uh, money to, to go towards road improvements. Uh, but my thing is, what makes District Four so special and unique is so much of it is inside the city. And when you get outside the city, you do have a population, but you have bigger tracts of land, so there's fewer people. That's, it's not a lot of density in the county. But what I try to do is when it comes to paving roads and, and addressing people's needs, we seeing more growth and development in, in, in the county areas where we have to agree or disagree to allow developers to come in and, and build uh, certain neighborhoods, certain sized homes in the area. So it's, it's kinda like, uh, it's a moving target at all times, because no one has the same target to hit in Rock Hill, Fort Mill, and York. But we just, we just try to do what we can, and a lot of times, we are more reactive. But there are some things that we do put in place that we are able to plan, uh, we try to keep everybody's taxes low. Uh, some people get a little upset in Rock Hill and Fort Mill, because the taxes are getting higher. But I tell them, that's your city taxes, that's your school board taxes. Uh, Fort Mill has grown so much over the last couple of years, they're now about to eclipse Rock Hill with our third high school. You know, if you go back fifteen years ago, it was only one high school in Fort Mill. Now, Fort Mill's gonna have three high schools, Rock Hill just got their third high school ten, eleven years ago with, with South Point. Um, so the school taxes are impacted, uh, impacting your property tax bill. Even though the bill comes with York County's name on it, we collect money for the city of Rock Hill, we collect money for the city of Fort Mill, we collect money for the city of Clover, and York. So the bill may say York County, only a portion of that goes to York County. So I advise people to look at your property tax bill, to see who's getting the biggest lion's share of your money. And then you can evaluate, are they using that money wisely, or effectively, or putting it in the right places? But school districts are impacting our property taxes way more than our cities and counties impact.
Wow, wow, that's, that's info that we need, that's info, you getting it right here. That Fire FM, I'm your host, Emane Weprop, and so our guest tonight is Wim Bump-Ruddy, County York County Councilman, District Four. And he, we in the building, man, and he giving the business tonight. He is really giving the business, and this is what we want. We wanna get a business. When you come to That Fire, we gonna give the business, cuz we want you to know what's going on around you. And like you said, brother, when you said that uh, people say they don't wanna get involved in politics, when po- where politics is truly into you, it controls almost every aspect of your life.
Every aspect of your life, from what you can do, and, and, and certain neighbo- in certain neighborhoods have their neighborhood rules. But when you come to how your roads are being paved, uh, taxes that you pay, how good your roads are, how much money is paid to the school system, how much money goes to the city, how much money goes to the county, how much money's being paid to uh, your city manager, how much money being paid to your county manager. It's all about spending your money, and I can tell you, the county, we don't make one thing. We just spend your money, and you should be wanting to make sure you got people in the right place, doing the right thing that's gonna take care of your money. Because at a certain point, some people spend too much money, some people don't take in enough money. So you gotta have that balance, because at the end of the day, we don't sell nothing to Charlotte, we don't sell nothing to New York, we can't ship nothing overseas. Only thing we do is collect your money and provide your services. And at the end of the day, if you can't send your son or daughter downtown Rock Hill, or if you can't send your son or daughter to York to put in an application and get a job to get some of this money, because the other side of town, the other families, they're sending their kids to these same outlets to get these jobs, to go out and build a successful family, and don't have any worries. So I'm encouraging people, put those job applications in with the city, put them in with the county. Um, bring those talents, we got some talented people that work for the county, and we pay some decent money. Because at the end of the day, if you can't get a job, you can't send your son or daughter to get a job, what good is the county to you? Not everybody's gonna get a job, but at the same time, I'm seeing so many people that do come get a job, don't have some of the same concerns and worries of these companies who are shut down, moving away. Now, I will tell you one fact that I'm, I'm very proud of, two years in a row, York County has been in, one year, it was twenty sixteen, York County led the nation in job growth in York County. We was number one in the country of bringing new jobs to York County. Last year, we was in the top, we, we finished in the top five. And that's taking advantage of what's going on in Charlotte, North Carolina, that's taking advantage of a good warm, warm weather climate, even though we had some cold weather here recently, but people are retiring from up north, bringing their retirement checks down south. And I tell people all the time, if you retire from up north, and you take that same one-dollar bill and bring it down south, it's now worth a dollar thirty. Because the buying power is so much greater down south. But if you take a dollar to, from Rock Hill, South Carolina, and move to New York, that dollar's now worth about seventy cents. Because the cost of living, you've moved to DC, you've moved to New York, you've moved, anywhere going up north, you lose that buying power. So what we're seeing is a lot of seniors, a lot of retired military people moving here to South Carolina, because their dollar gets to scratch so much further. If you wanna fix the income, you getting two, three thousand dollars a month in New York. That's not a lot of money. You're moving, you in DC, you get three thousand dollars a month for a time, that's not a lot of money. You bring that three thousand down here, you able to afford a home, you able to move about, you take vacations, you go to murder beach, you go to the mountains, you go to Carolines, you gonna see the Panthers, the Hornets. We are in the heart of where it's at, because we're so close to Atlanta, so close to murder beach, so close to the mountains.
Right next door to Charlotte.
Right next door to Charlotte, you can fly in out of Charlotte, International Airport, take anywhere in the world. People wanna be close to these amenities, we got beautiful beaches, lakes, rivers, streams. You know, we got it here in, 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 in South Carolina, and people wanna be here. Uh, but people are not moving here if they can't get jobs, but we, we put Rock Hill and York County on the map the last two years. We're not only breeding football players, we bringing jobs, so people can afford to go to work.
That's awesome, man, and um, I'm telling you, man, uh, I wanna ask you, Bump, you went to Winthrop University, am I correct? Um, is that a great business school to attend?
Winthrop is, I like to call it the Harvard of the South, the Harvard of the South. Because if you're from this area, you go to Winthrop, it's not that expensive compared to USC, Clemson, Furman, some of the other schools. You can get an affordable education right here at home. I started out at York Tech. I couldn't afford to just go from midtown to Winthrop. I went to York Tech, got the same classes, transferred to Winthrop, and my degree says Winthrop University. And, and when I tell you, I was one of those students who wasn't a fast-track college student. I wasn't your traditional college student, but I was able to maneuver through the obstacles to get to where I needed to be. I knew I couldn't walk on Winthrop's campus and be that, that dominant student. Because I still liked to go hang out, party, and do what I was gonna do when I'm seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. So York Tech was kinda my holding pattern, to get me to a point to grow up, to see how things really work. And, you know, having people in your ear that says, you need to get an education, you're not playing football anymore, you need to get an education. I got my associate's degree from York Tech, transferred to Winthrop, I majored in economics. And when I tell you I was the only African-American in that business school, in that class that graduated, I was the only one. So I'm not in an environment now, when I walk into a room, I'm intimidated by being the only African-American in a certain environment. I'm not only, I'm not intimidated when I walk into a meeting with the mayor, or the meeting with the city manager, or meeting with some of these higher-up people, and I look around, I'm the only person. I don't like that feeling, I wish I had two or three more that was with me who could be on that level. And that's where we gotta get our community to, it's, it's, it's okay to be in these situations, but it's not the best place to be. I wanna be able to look across the table and see a city manager that looks like me, because he knows and respects some of the things that we would have to do to pull up some of these areas that we need to pull up. I wanna be able to look in a room and see a department head who has the authority to hire somebody and pay them fifty thousand dollars. And it's not such a struggle to take a chance on someone who has the knowledge and expertise to do the job, and the only thing holding them back is their skin color. These examples and these problems still exist, and until we're able to break down these walls, these barriers, to get people in these positions to respect that, and respect the fact that we got two hundred and thirty-something thousand people in York County, and about twenty-five to twenty-eight percent are African-American paying into the system, and the system's not putting anything back into these communities. That's not right.
That's right, that is so right. Y'all getting it right here. That Fire FM, all the way live with your host, Emane Weprop, and so it's my man, Wim Bump-Ruddy, baby. Straight off Ruddy Street, midtown, the middle of town, the middle of Rock Hill, y'all. He giving the goods this evening, man, and it feels so good to be in the house with my man, and I'm telling you, man, we getting it in. And Bump, I wanna ask you, man, uh, what do you think about what's going on, all the stuff that's happening with Donald Trump? And all some of the, some of the stuff that he's been saying, like some of the SOBs, and when he called all the NFL players that, and, you know, and just his whole take on politics in the world. What, 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 what's your truth on that?
Well, that's, I, I, I wish this was, uh, wasn't serious XM radio. We can just go all the way live, go all over here, but to be honest with you, what we seeing out of our president would not have been tolerated four years ago with Barack Obama, had he been on that level. What we seeing out of our president would not be acceptable if it was eight years ago when Obama was in there. What we seeing out of our president would not be acceptable if it was twelve years ago with George Bush in it. And so, it's, it's a total disrespect to this country, it's a total disrespect to the position. Now, we're going through this thing right now, is Donald Trump a racist? You know, he says he's a racist, but anytime that you have to say something that, I'm not this, I'm not that, it goes to the frame of mind of saying, well, I got two black friends, what does that mean?
Yeah.
That don't mean nothing, but it's a total disrespect to the position, um, but that's the product of what we got now, of people not going out to vote. We are, we're, we got what we paid, but we got, we got what we didn't go vote in, and that's to Donald Trump. And that, it's not gonna get any better over the next four years. So what the game plan needs to be now is make sure everybody get out during the midterms come November, and vote the people in office who can neutralize, who can stabilize, who can make Donald Trump answer for the things that he's saying. Because right now, the Republicans control the House, the Republicans control the Senate. So what we need to do is make sure that we get out and vote for people to go to the House of Representatives, make sure we vote people in to the Senate. That could put Donald Trump in check, because we see his own party is afraid of Donald Trump. When Donald Trump walks in the room, and you know something's not right, and you don't say anything, you're just as guilty as, as the person committing the crime, committing the sin, committing the, the acts against the community. So we need to do better at the ballot box, and we got an opportunity coming up, uh, this October, to elect new congressmen from the area, uh, District Five. Uh, we have a chance to, to uh, send people to Washington DC, right here from, from York, Lancaster, Chester, uh, what's the other, Kershaw, from this area to go to DC that will represent uh, us as a community, represent us as a people, represent us as a state. Um, continuously, over and over again, we send people to Columbia and expect Columbia to change. For the last twenty, thirty, forty years, my, all of my adult life, the Republicans have controlled Columbia. And we continue to send Republicans to Columbia thinking it's gonna get better. The only way it's gonna change is you send somebody with a different mindset, and, and we're not seeing it, you know. We've always been at the bottom of education, that's not gonna change, because the Republicans have been in it the last forty years, and we still at the bottom. So the only option that we got is to send somebody who are gonna fight and not take money from our teachers. Donald Trump introduced a plan that's gonna reduce the amount of money that teachers can get back from spending out of their own pockets to go into some of these classrooms, because teachers' budgets have been stripped so much, teachers' pay have been stripped so much. But we need to start looking at things that's going on, it, you may not even have a son or daughter in school, but if teachers don't have what they need to teach the kids that's living next door to you, these kids dropping out of school, who do you think is the first person that's a threat to your safety? There's a kid who's not going to school, who's not getting educated. So sometimes, people who don't have kids need to start taking a look at what's going on with our education, because if kids not being educated, uneducated kids walking the street without a job, without a place to live, and lay their head and be comfortable, is the first threat to your safety, is the first threat to your security, is the first threat to break into your home. The first threat to come in and, and do wildly harmful things. So at some point, we need to start making sure all facets of life is funded. You know, it, it's one thing to say, mm, I don't believe in abortion. It's another thing to say, I don't even believe in uh, governmental assistance to help people with these kids. So you don't allow people to have an abortion, but then when they had the kids, you don't wanna assist them with raising the kids. So now, that leads to all kinds of societal problems. So we got a long way to go, and I, I think we need to have an open and honest conversation, and, and have these heart-to-hearts, and put it on the table. Some people don't wanna talk about the truth, they'd rather live with, uh, uh, let me make sure I get this right. Uh, a, a pretty lie to face the ugly truth. And, and so, if we start facing these ugly truths, maybe we can turn them around and make them uh, look a lot better.
Wow, that's awesome, man. You hear, you hearing it, all the way live, right here with Emane Weprop, and so, Wim Bump-Ruddy giving the goods, man. Um, uh, I ain't talked to too many people that just, just give out that much information about what's going on behind the scene with politics and, because a lot of people don't believe in politics, they think politicians are liars, and they got game. But if we're not at the table, and we can't be in the game, and if we're not in the game, then we're standing on the outside, it's gonna always look like they're up to something, or, 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 they, 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 then, then really not for the people. You know, cuz that's a saying that goes around, I can't trust him, I can't trust her, you know, because people don't know what's going on. What can we do to um, to help usher in people to begin to focus on politics, and the role that it plays in our lives, so we can become effective?
Well, first thing I would tell anybody that say they can't trust a politician, or trust anyone that represents this community, I don't doubt them for that. But I, I, I blame them for not going to the meetings, to get in a situation where you know, and you can speak to a person's character, whether they're doing the right thing. It's one thing to say, I don't trust you, it's another thing to say, I don't trust you, but I'm coming to make sure I put you in check, to make sure you're doing the right thing. Because let's admit it, this has been a such a corrupt business, has been such a corrupt industry, uh, with the world of politics. But you just can't sit back and say, I don't trust the process. So, once you go to the meetings, once you've made a connection with your elected official, then if they're not doing what they say they're gonna do, then openly and honestly say you don't trust them, give examples of why you don't trust them, find somebody to run against them, and let's vote them out of office. Because the position is not going away. The only thing that can go away is the person that's in the position. So if you don't trust the person, find out the reason why, give the examples, and then when it's time for that person to run, that's not representing your community, or representing your, your values, or your interests, you have one vote to help vote that person out, you have one vote to help vote that person in. So don't just say, I don't trust. So don't just say, I don't trust politician or I don't trust individuals. Make sure you know what you're talking about and go to that person. Because they may be doing all that they can do to help your situation and it's just not nothing that can be done about your situation. A lot of times I tell people in this business, I'll lose more than I won. But my wins give me so much more satisfaction. I don't think about the loss. Because I'm sitting, the seat I'm sitting in, I'm two out of seven Democrats. I'm the only African American. So you know I'm gonna lose a lot. But when I do win, I'm so proud of the things that I have been able to accomplish, the things I have been able to put on the table. I don't care about the losses. I expect to lose. In life, you probably gonna lose more than you win. So, but that don't keep you from going on to secure that next win, that next victory. Because on Monday morning, the game starts over. You gotta go to work. If you want to be able to pay your bills two weeks from now. If something happens in the middle of the week, you just don't throw your hands up and quit your job. You keep on fighting. Because at the end of the day, when the paychecks come in, you pay your bills, you start over. If I have a loss, I start back over. But I can assure you, I think I've done more, uh, for District Four when it comes to, uh, focusing on our roles in our community, making sure that when a certain aspect of the community needs a voice to be raised, I'll put my voice to it. Because so many times over the years, we've had officials who haven't spoke well for certain parts of our community. It's the go along, get along game. And it's game, it's timeout for those because not a lot has been done. But we need to put the focus back into our neighborhoods, man. I got a call, um, just the other day wanting to see what can we do to get our neighborhood parks back up and running. And that's one of the things that I campaigned on. That's one of the things I wholeheartedly bleed in because not everybody can go to Riverwalk. Not everybody can go to Manchester. Not everybody can make it to Cherry Park. Especially when you live two blocks from a park, but your park is not functioning. You don't have a slide more. You don't have a swing. You don't have, uh, the amenities in your neighborhood park that you see at some of these bigger parks. But our neighborhood residents are paying the taxes to pay the bills on the parks. So why can't Southland Park have a better feel like Cherry Park? Why can't the Board Hill Park? Why can't, uh, Armory Park off Saluda, uh, look like and feel like Confederate Park or Sunset Park? You know, we need to make sure we're putting money back where money came from. And I can assure you, every community throughout Rock Hill is paying into this system. And if you can't go get a job, you can't go get your park worked on, what good is paying taxes? And that's why you hear people say they don't trust the process. They don't trust the politician because they're not seeing the, uh, the residual of the dollars going in. But don't expect a return when you're not putting nothing in. You should expect your parks to look good. You should expect your, your city to look and feel good. But if you're not going to the meeting, if you're not talking to your elected officials, you're not getting involved in some of the issues, you're not serving on any of these boards and commissions. And I'll tell you, our boards and commissions do all the legwork and bring us the answers. And we are the fortunate ones to get to say yeah or nay. But I'll tell you, the grunt work is done by serving on a board. The grunt work is done by serving on a commission. The grunt work is done by serving on a, serving on a subcommittee that goes out and does some research and bringing the information back safe. Here it is. We hope you make the best decision. We get the credit for saying yeah or nay, but I can tell you, we're not the ones out beating the bushes. It's men and women who go to work every day, who find time to commit to something that will benefit their community. But I must say, we don't have a lot of us serving on these communities. We want to send other people to do the work, but we want, we want to receive the benefit. It doesn't work that way. Because if I'm doing the work, typically, people gonna shift the benefit to the people from their community, people that look like them, people who have a vested interest. And so that's why it's important to have people on boards and commissions, people to serve on these elected positions and people who just are part of good old fashioned organizations to take a responsibility and do something in our community. And man, there's, there's something that each and every resident can do. I don't care if you live in Rock Hill, York, Chester, Lancaster. There's something that every individual can do to make their community better, make their city better, to make the state better. And it's not gonna happen if we continue to sit at home and sit on the chair. Uh, not every position is the glamorous position. Somebody has to be out in the field doing the grunt work to make the next person rise up a little higher. But everybody wants to be the one to rise up higher and we all end up sitting in the same position. So I applaud those men and women who are out there doing the grunt work, uh, serving on these boards and commissions to get us in the best possible position to make the right decision.
So, um, tell me, how do, how do, how do you go about getting on boards and commissions? How you, how you do that? How do you go about? What are the channels?
The channels, I mean, you can go to any, go to the city of Rock Hill website. There's a link there that will allow you to fill out an application. There's a link on the York County website. That's YorkCountyGov.com. You can click on Boards and Commissions. It's a very, very simple application to fill out. Uh, we have probably fifteen to twenty boards and commissions. Um, some of them we have a hard time filling, but they still meet. So it's a simple application. Uh, some of them are district specific, which means I have the right to pick who I want to represent in my district. Some of them are at-large positions where the entire city council or county council gets to vote on who gets to serve in an at-large capacity. But most of the positions are district specific where each of us seven members are able to put one person on a board. And it basically serves as a side council that's gonna do homework when it comes to hospitality tax, whether it's talking about fire protection, whether it's talking about planning, zoning, uh, and just a lot of other different things that, that does legwork. We have one, it's a hospitality tax commission. This board controls several million dollars. They do the legwork, tell us yay or nay to give the okay for this group of people to spend this money. So these boards are very impactful. They have a lot of plout. They have a lot of say in what we do. Because if the board says, we're gonna give out, uh, two point three million dollars over the next year to come see me, to the strawberry festival, to such and such gymnastics, to, uh, concert series downtown Rock Hill, we take what they say because they've done the homework. Because we all have our jobs, our careers. We can't do the work that each and every board and commission does because we're part-time. They don't pay me enough to just do county council and afford the lifestyle that I do. So it's very important to get involved. And some people, you know, if, if you, you have certain talents in planning, apply for that board. You have a talent in evaluating applications and what's impactful to a community, uh, look to get on our hospitality tax commission. Um, it's very rare that we, that I see people of color pursue these avenues. And it's a lot of power in these boards and commissions. They're not paid positions, so don't look to get a pay. Uh, but it means so much to this community. I would love to see a rock and soul festival downtown Rock Hill to where a nonprofit puts it together and comes to get, and come get thirty thousand dollars from York County. We give twenty-five thousand to come see me. We give fifteen thousand dollars to, uh, Christmasville. We were giving twenty-five thousand to strawberry festival. Why can't we have organizations form nonprofits and come get thirty thousand from York County? To put on a rock and soul festival downtown Rock Hill, where we bring in, whether it's gospel artists, R&B artists, neo-soul artists. These, these type activities start with a nonprofit that can show that they can have economic impact on the city of Rock Hill or Fort Mill or Yorka Clover. And that's what it's about. If money's not turning over, nobody eats. You know, if everybody took their money and put it in the bank and don't go out to eat, grew their own crops, our grocery stores were shut down, Burger King was shut down, Pizza Hut. If, if the money's not circulating throughout the community, our community will starve and it will, it will eventually, uh, I guess you could say eat itself up. Because if money's not moving, that dry cleaner, clean your clothes, grocery shopping, buying gas, whatever. So we want to support events that will continue to circulate money.
Awesome, man. Awesome, man. Y'all can see how awesome it is. It's all the way live tonight. The information is coming from Wim Bump Roddy, York County Councilman, District Four himself. He's laying, he's laying out the whole plan for how we are to attack politics, get involved, become effective, become powerful in our community and raise our people from the dead like it's really supposed to be done. I want to ask you this question, man. What power, what kind of power does the church, what the church's role in a community really have in power? What kind of impact can the church have? Cause there are a lot of churches in our communities. What kind of impact can we have on our community as far as politics and getting people involved?
Man, I, I think that's one of our strongest, most underused assets in our community when it comes to the political world. Now, obviously churches can't endorse candidates. Obviously churches can't do too much, uh, upfront in person with the political arena. But churches have such a, uh, avenue to reach everybody that walks in that door, to raise the level of awareness of what's going on in the world of politics. When it comes to voting locally, when it comes to voting nationally. But I'll tell you, it's frustrating when you see, uh, come November, every church on the block talks about voting for the president, voting for the president. Did we have that same voice? Did we have that same get up and go when it came time to vote for mayor in the city of Rock Hill, throughout Rock Hill? Because we seen it in oh eight, we seen it in twenty twelve, how every church, every black church in America stood up and made sure they went out of their way to make sure people got out to vote. And yes, Obama did what he was gonna do for the country, for the world. But when it comes time to have that same impact, when it's a city council race, when it's a county council race, when it's a mayor's race, when it's a state house representative race, when it's a senate race, we got to be fired up about every level. Because they only, you only get, you're not gonna make it to the championship if you don't win.
Down here.
On these levels. You know, everybody's gonna be fired up two weeks from now when New England plays whoever wins this next game. But were they as fired up inviting people over? Just opening your doors to your neighbors, your coworkers, come on over, have a good time? When it was Jacksonville playing the Panthers, when it was Miami playing Chicago? If you're in the world of politics, you gotta be fired up when it comes to city council, county council, your state representative, your senate representative and your president. Don't just get fired up for the presidential race. Because like I said earlier, Donald Trump, Obama, George Bush, none of them can come to Rock Hill, South Carolina and pave your roads. None of them can come to Rock Hill and go to York and say lower that person's taxes, increase this person's taxes. Put this person in a judgeship. Put this person in a planning department, department head. That's what we do. But we're the ones that affecting your day-to-day lives. And I tell people every day, call the White House and see how long it take them to call you back. Call my house and see how long it takes for me to call you back. Now look where you putting all your apples and oranges and eggs and you put them all here, but you discount the locals. But when it comes time to your immediate needs, you call me. Or you call someone that serves in that same capacity. We need to be fired up about every single election. I don't care if we have to let the dog catch you, go out and vote for. Cause he's gonna impact your life, your community some way, somehow. And some people, ah, that's not real. But if that dog attacks your three-year-old because we didn't have the right laws in place that made that owner do what they was supposed to do, then now you wondering, who's over animal control? You don't call to Washington DC because you got a problem with your animal control. You got loose running dogs. You got so many cats. You called a county. But come time to vote, you didn't care who was in charge of animal control. You didn't care who was hiring the animal control director. You didn't care about the laws that was gonna make sure that they did the right thing with this animal.
Wow, man. I'm telling you, we getting the goods today right here. It's all the way live on the show tonight. It is all the way live. What, what a way to get informed on Sunday evening, man. We got County Councilman, District Four, Wim Bump Roddy in the house, man. And I'm telling you, man, you've shared some, you've shared some serious light on how politics work. You know, how we need to attack this thing, how we need to go about doing it, how we need to become more politically conscious and aware of, you know, as a people where we at. We need people in the house at the table. And so we're gonna be, we're gonna be, we're gonna be driving this thing like Earl Hunter say, drive the business. That's our, that's our partner right there. We gonna drive the business, man. I want to give bro a shout out on this new brown groundbreaking, um, business and they, they just broke ground on a new business, man. And, um, he's really doing his thing, man. I want to give you a big shout out, Earl. Me and Wim in the house, man.
Well, before I get out of here, man, I just want to say, I'll be remiss if I didn't mention, uh, the officer shooting that we had earlier this week. Uh, you know, it's always a tragic situation when any life is taken.
Yes.
And it's even escalated when it's a child. It doesn't matter the race, it doesn't matter.
That's right.
ethnicity, where they from. Anytime a shooting takes place and it involves someone who's given their life, given their time, effort, talents to protect our community, we have to stop and take a pause and recognize that this is not the way it should be. Now, the officer that was involved in the, the, uh, person perpetrated this situation, it doesn't matter to me if they're black or white, but at the same time, we as a community, uh, have to stop and take a pause and keep that family in our prayers.
Yes.
That individual, uh, there were four officers involved. We ultimately were shot. One, one passed away. And we, uh, funeralized tomorrow. Uh, York County's seen people reach out to, to the family.
Officer Dottie.
Uh, yeah, uh, to this community. Uh, they started a Facebook page and in two days they were well up, close to fifty thousand dollars. But no amount of money is gonna replace this individual. No amount of money is gonna, uh, stop that mother, that father, uh, who had any kids from thinking or missing, uh, him for the rest of their life. So we do want to make sure that we recognize the importance of our men and women, blue, brown, whatever color their uniform is that served this community, uh, and as a spinoff of that, I still want to encourage people of color to apply to the come please officer, to apply to the come shit. Because if we don't have, again, if we don't have people in these meetings or if we don't have people on our street patrolling that look like us, they may not feel the same way when they stop. They might not feel the same way when they stop somebody else. But I, I just encourage people because somebody's gonna be in that patrol car. And if something's going on, somebody's gonna stop that car. But at the same time, we want to make sure we cover the spectrum of people who are gonna be serving and stopping these cars, whoever respect who's in that car. And so that's just a spinoff of, we don't want to take nothing away from the individual or the family or the situation that happened here. Uh, fortunately for us, we're still here and hopefully we'll learn from the mistakes that, um, the alleged perpetrators committed, as well as the mistakes whether the officer made. But we just want to send out some donations to the family, friends, and the entire York County Sheriff's Department staffs. I know I was, we get emails over in the middle of the night when it happened. Uh, we did get briefed on some of the details which we can't share publicly, but it's a tragic situation. Anytime someone commits their life to serve our community and it ends in a shooting with this man.
Yes. And, um, y'all do, y'all keep the family in your prayers and you know, we got them in our prayers right here at Dat Fire FM. I'm your host, Emanuele Propes Soul, my brother Wim Bump Roddy, York County Councilman, District Four. Before we get up out of here, brother, any shout outs, last words, anything you want to give to people before we get up out of here, man? It's been an awesome evening, man.
Man, I just want to remind everybody that February the third is my birthday party. It's my pre-Super Bowl party. It's my Black History Month party. It's my income tax party. You've worked all week. There's any reason on the calendar from now till December thirty-first. If you want to come out and celebrate it, come on out and celebrate it. We're partying with a purpose. We're actually asking every individual that comes through the door to bring a pack of socks, a pair of gloves or something. We're gonna start our initiative off where we can start giving, uh, to people who are in need. This is just the tip of the iceberg. There's so much more that we're gonna do underneath this. Uh, we're gonna share information to where if you want to donate some of your clothing items, your financial contributions, your time, your talent, to start giving back. Because we need to all rise, we need to raise the level. And you can't raise the level starting at the top. In order for the level to rise up, you gotta start somewhere at the bottom. And we're not saying that this, this is the absolute bottom, but we know you have clothing items at home that you need to get rid of. We know you got clothing items at home that you've outgrown. Some of us have lost weight. Some of us have gained weight. We need to update our wardrobe. So man, on this night starting February the third, we're asking you donate brand new socks, brand new gloves. And we're gonna give you information to where if you can take your, the suit that you have lost so much weight that you just can't fit anymore. We're gonna actually give you information where you can take your shoes, clothes, any items or volunteerism that you want to take and give back to this community. Cause it starts with giving back. If you don't give back, you don't have room to receive the next blessing that's coming through to replace that suit that you're about to give away. If you don't give away nothing, you ain't gonna have room to receive that next blessing that's gonna put that new car in your yard or put you in a new house or put them new curtains up. And we got so much stuff that we can share with one another, uh, but we got to start somewhere. And it's something so simple as a pair of socks and gloves that would mean so much to someone who don't have it. We're gonna start there and bring it up. We're gonna start there and bring it up.
Man, it's a blessing having you tonight, bro, and we thank you for the information, man. We, uh, we, 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 um, we just, we supporting you, man, and, um, on your, on your next move, man, and the next election coming up with county council, when is that election, when does that start?
I'll be announcing my county council run in March. We file papers, uh, March, April, um, hopefully nobody runs against me in June, hopefully nobody runs against me in November, uh, give me a time to, to continue to reconnect with people throughout the community, let them know what I'm doing, how to get them involved, and, and I can also help drive people out to the polls, to make sure that we send somebody to, to DC in our congressional seat that will represent our community as well.
Y'all support this, man. Wim Bumprotty, District Four, York County Council, y'all heard it right here, firsthand on That Fire FM, I'm your host, Emmanuel Prophet Soul. Don't forget, February the 8th, the MTC Empire will be here, they will be right here at That Fire FM at 5:00 PM, uh, looking for all artists, come out, young, old, doesn't make no difference. If you want an opportunity in the entertainment business, Mr. Darryl Easterling will be here, he's a, he's a, he's a music consultant and, uh, working with, uh, A&R Management, Aaron and Antonio Reed, and, uh, which are the sons of L.A. Reed, they will be right here, and it will be live screen, you will see us live, and so you get, they'll get to sit in and listen, you'll have people listening at your tracks, bring two tracks, make sure you be here, spread the word, tell people about it, it's happening right here at That Fire FM. This is your radio internet station, I am your host, Emmanuel Prophet Soul, and to the other events, Board Hill Reunion Committee presents a red, black, white unity ball, February the 10th, starts at 9:00 PM at the Elks Lodge, be there, this is for all the communities, bringing everybody together, this is one big movement, and it's called the Now Movement, because we need to move now. Um, and we got Kings First, Queen, uh, February 24, 2018, join us at beautiful McBride Hall at Wentworth University Campus, mothers and their sons create memories of a lifetime and a chance to be crowned best dressed of the evening. For more information, contact Shewanda Erby at 803-554-5434. I am your host, Emmanuel Prophet Soul, we doing it big at That Fire FM, Firewater Entertainment, and we about out this piece, and Bump, man, we love you, man, keep doing your thing, and thank you for all the information, man, because it's really much needed.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.